Good evening, let's do this. Good evening and welcome to the March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three Gray Zoning Board of Appeals. Roll call, Georgia?
Present.
Daryl?
Derek, Derek, but yes.
Derek is here?
Yes, present.
And Brad is here. I don't know why.
It's all right, it's all right.
Daryl, Daryl, his brother Daryl on my mind.
That's all right. That's all right.
Our first order is to approve the minutes of the October twenty-sixth meeting, which is in a package from last month. Is there a motion?
I move that we, Georgia Woodbury, I move that we accept the minutes from the October twenty-sixth meeting.
Is there a second?
I second.
Derek seconds? All those in favor? Our next order of business is new business, public hearings. The first one is for the Wyman variance. And I would move that we open a public hearing on the Wyman variance, which Sarah Wyman is requesting a practical difficulty variance for a thirty-foot reduction of a fifty-foot front line setback to an existing eight-foot by ten-foot shed located on her property at one oh four Johnson Road, Gray Main, tax map seventeen, lot three dash thirteen dot three, located in a Lake zoning district. Is there a second?
Derek, Derek, Derek second.
Derek seconds? Unanimous? The public meet, the public hearing is in order. Who is representing Sarah Wyman? Sarah, step, Sarah, are you Sarah?
Yes.
Step right up to the microphone, please.
Okay.
And let me find my... What's going on?
Um, I've never done this before, so I don't really know what, um... I have a shed on my property that I'm hoping can stay put. It's there storing water. I don't have a well or septic on my property, so it's kind of essential to have a place to keep my water source. And relocating is going to be difficult, and I'm just concerned that attempting to relocate the shed could cause it damage and break it.
Is, is the shed in disrepair now? Are you asking for a larger shed?
I'm asking for it to just stay where it is.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I didn't know she was replacing it.
Yeah, there's no replace, just, I just want to leave it where it is, because attempting to move it, I'm afraid it's gonna, it's gonna break it.
Sarah, just out of curiosity, was there a reason? Did somebody tell you that you had to apply for variance where it already, is already there?
The code enforcement.
Was the shed there when you bought the property?
No.
So, so you built it?
Yeah.
Okay.
And how long ago?
Um, trying to, I've only been there since two thousand nineteen, so I want to say either early two thousand twenty-one. I'm guessing, I really don't remember.
So just a few years?
Yes.
Did you have a permit when you built the shed?
No, naively, first-time homeowner, I didn't know.
Okay.
It's just a small little shed.
So you didn't think you needed a permit?
Right, and then I found out I needed a permit, so I went to try to get the permit and then, after the fact, and then learned that it was too close to the road after the fact.
Okay.
Thank you. Could you have built the shed some other spot?
Oh, wow, I'm, I'm getting good at this, because I almost have the same question.
Also, let me open up to the board then for questions.
Yes, um, sorry.
No, what?
Um, yeah, my, my question really kind of was that, um, why did you decide to put it there?
So, the property is set up such that beyond that area, there are some big boulders, so it would have meant, and beyond that, the back of the yard is kind of more wetlands, where the back is a hill, and so it's just wet back there. It's also right next to where the, um, the driveway I had put in has a turnaround spot in it, so it's just beyond that where there happened to be flat surface in the front. It's, it's pretty wooded. When I bought it, it was just a, a hunting shed essentially, so I'm trying to limit clearing trees, and there were some big rocks in the ground in that area. The right side of the driveway was reserved for future septic plans, so I didn't want to mess with that.
Well, there is a note from a neighbor. The lady put the property on across the street.
Yes, they're here with me today.
Is that the only? I'm talking, I'm, I'm talking to myself from the...
I have, I have...
Go ahead.
Uh, it's more real for you. I'm like kind of thinking ahead here, basing questions maybe off of these. And then, now would that be running into that?
A little bit.
I'm just thinking of ways to, you know, I'm doing.
Sarah, could you step up, please, for a minute, up here? Folks, what we're gonna be looking at is part of, one of the drawings that she said and the situation of the stuff in the property. Come on up. Uh, this is Johnson Road, and from, it looks like this is the, the house that you live in?
Correct.
Primitive drawing?
Yeah, ten, uh, twelve by sixteen.
Okay, and this is the, let's see, upside down?
That's the shed.
That's the shed, okay, and what's back here?
That's a proposed grow, well, nothing's been actually put in yet.
And where is the septic system going?
The septic system would go in this area.
Okay, what's on this side?
That's all trees.
This is all, even up here, all trees?
Yeah, that's a little bit more cleared out, but that's where it's all wetlands. And then there's a hill that kind of starts there going up over the back, so everything slides off the hill, making the backyard a pond.
So...
Temporary pond.
The hill is high here.
Yes.
And then it, how high is the top of that hill? I mean, if you were to stand in your yard, is it above your head?
Yeah.
And it flows down toward your house, the dwelling, and then this gets, is it marshland or is it just lawn that gets wet?
It's just lawn that gets wet during this time of year.
Okay, so, as a result of that, is that why the engineer said the septic's gotta go over here?
Yes.
Okay.
And also there, because there was already, um, there's a privy or an outhouse there, and I guess the previous owner had also had plans for, um, for that, to go in that place.
Okay, so to the front of the house, in this area, there's a privy. And out back is the proposed, is the shed. And this is the proposed, uh, wellhead. And the septic system is proposed to be here?
Yes, if and when that's not necessarily happening right away or anything.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not worried about that, but, yeah.
Going to Mr. Shirley's question. Would it be possible to relocate the shed between the house, the soggy area of the lawn, and the well? Because there's, there's a, an appeal thing that we have to overcome that Mr. Shirley mentioned, which is, which one is it, Derek?
Uh, it is, uh, C. Is the practical difficulty is not the result of action taken by the petitioner or a priorer or owner.
So, where, it wasn't there when you moved the prop, bought the property and you placed it there? That's a, geez, I hate to say it, that's a problem that you created. Is there enough space to move the shed from here to here? I know, I know it...
Space, yes, that would, like, could potentially require having full brought in the land, isn't...
Could it be done with pucks, you know, big concrete pucks and placed? Anybody can help, bro?
At a pretty good expense, I guess, if you wanted to get a crane in there, lifting it and move it.
Oh, those are the neighbors across the street?
Yes, that's vague with me. And the line is there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's their property line.
He knows better about that part than I would.
Could it get moved? Absolutely. Um, is she gonna move it? Probably, if she moves it, she's probably moving it off the property.
Okay, you can step back. No, thank you. Georgia, do you have any questions?
No, I'm just looking at these pictures, and it is pretty wooded and...
I, I have, I have, uh, another question.
Go ahead.
Uh, let's just say hypothetically, you would have to move it. Would you have to create environmental damage to, to make more space?
I would be cutting down trees that I'd rather not take down for...
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's part of the property there, as is, is just trying to be environmentally friendly, while I don't have a lot of amenities.
And maybe, because when you moved there, per se, it was a lo, it's almost when you take down trees, you're, you might be affecting the, the character of the neighborhood if you take down some trees that you don't need to. Because then I jumped out of point E.
I guess, that's, that's good.
Yeah, see, environmental, natural, environment.
Right, because, because if we, if we said, oh, no, yeah, but she's gonna cause, cause environmental damage.
Could, we ask your neighbor a question? Do you mind answering a question?
Oh, we don't mind.
Would you step up to the microphone, please? And it'd be nice to know your name, I guess.
The neighbor.
My name's Bill, Bill Rennie.
What's your last name, Bill?
Rennie, R-E-N-Y.
Okay. But, um, you wrote a letter, right, in support?
Thank you.
Okay. Bill, the question is, um, okay, one of you wrote the letter.
Yeah.
The, the biggest hurdle that we have to try to overcome is this letter C, which is the practical difficulty, that's the location of the shed as it is now, is not the result of action taken by the petitioner, which is Sarah. Not only is that an ordinance requirement, that's also a state statute. Now, how do we circumvent that statute to allow you, Sarah, or Sarah to keep the shed where it is? Or do we say, the best thing to do would just be to go to Home Depot or wherever and buy four hockey, you know, those, four of those concrete pucks?
I know what you're talking about, right.
That people would say, set mobile homes on, or whatever it might be. Move those inside the setback somewhere and put the shed on it. I know it would be difficult, you know, some hard work on behalf of you and maybe your neighbors, or if you had a tractor, the front end loaded, they could roll it across there or something, but we, we need to say, you know, we didn't knowingly...
Right.
Violate the statute.
Right.
And the whole appeal process could be eliminated if that shed could be moved inside the setback somehow.
And can I, can I ask a question about the, the setback? So the, is, where this is a private road and the setback, is it to their property line? Because their property line comes across the road into my property li, well, into what looks like my yard by a good stretch, so I could be fifty feet back from the road, from, from the, the Johnson Road, but not fifty feet back technically from where their property comes, because they own the road in front of the house.
Ms. Munson? It's a question for you, from the property line.
Okay.
So, I mean, from our perspective, from my perspective, that aggravates your situation even more in accordance with the statute.
Unless they're willing to sell the fifty-foot...
We're not gonna ask people to sell their properties or something.
Well, yeah, I know, that would be the, the only way, other way would be to, to, you know, if you could get, to have a property from, in a butter, to alleviate the situation.
Could you alleviate it with an E, sir?
No.
No, so it has to be that she'll sell or whatever.
I see, huh? We can see them.
Yeah.
Yeah, does the sale, would the sale include the road? Right, we'd have to include the part of the road.
It would be to what, where the, she has to be fifty feet back from her front property line. So however she achieves that...
Yeah, it would be from the road.
Is her, yeah.
Property line on, on the other side of the road, that you occur to the road.
Yeah.
And, and the front property line is in fact along the road, where your property line crosses the road, but still the front property line is on that roadside of, of the house.
Yes, it's on the roadside. Um, that's not, I don't really consider that an on-the-table thing. That's not what I'm trying to do. I was just making sure that that was exactly where that stopped, because otherwise that puts the shed in the middle of the muck of the backyard and...
I can't, I don't want to speak for anybody else.
Cutting the trees down.
I'm at that point that I don't see a reasonable means that we could put forward a motion that would knowingly violate the statute. And either the town would take us to court, or the state would take us to court. Or you, if we say no to this, then you would have to appeal to Superior Court, which would cost god knows what. And I think it would, I mean, it may be a sapling that you have to cut or something, you know, a very small tree, or you may have to set it on in front of the tree line, but... Not, not my final decision. Does anybody else have any questions that they'd like to ask?
I, I wanna, I wanna express some thoughts. It's one of those things where, when I, when I look at these, because like he said, there's, there's questions that we have to, like, make sure we say yes to for this to pass. And one thing personally, I think a lot of this, the fact that it's the person's personal property, the fact that you have to even do this, I find personally, on my personal record, full of bloney. That's my personal belief. But I, I, I understand what, that's why he's here, because that's why he's the boss in the chair, because he understands the legality of it and doesn't want to get the town sued. But there has to be at some point some understanding of just, if this guy's cool with it and it's his property, I understand the law is the law, and it's just a little shed with water in it. It's not like she's growing pot.
And I mean...
You know what I mean? Like, you know, so it's like, it's like, I understand what, what you're saying, and, and like me being like, you know, the young hippie that I am, I'm just like, this is so ridiculous. So it's like, I want to be like, yeah, and just break the law, because I like breaking the law. Just kidding, that's a joke, uh, for the record. But, you know, it is hard to get around these questions. And that's what I'm sitting here trying to ponder, to come up with ways to get around them, to help.
I have a question for the neighbor. A question for the neighbors. This point B, that's the granting of a variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not detrimental, unreasonably detrimentally affect the use or market value of the abiding properties. If she starts clearing trees to move this shed, how is it gonna change the neighborhood? If you look at it from the other angle.
That's what I, that's kind of what I brought up too, that's why I asked her about the trees.
It's a ten-foot by ten-foot shed, right?
Eight by ten.
Eight by ten?
Because she's gonna have to move it, so there'll be trees cleared where they're, the, the trail that they're moving it along, as well as where she's placing it.
Would you have to cut down trees to move it?
Yes.
Or just cut down trees to place it?
They had to get this off.
To move it, you can see in the pictures that there's trees virtually on every side except the, the driveway.
Remember, this used to be a camping, a camping place. This guy used to go right on his back door and camp. I mean, I don't know that, actually, I have no idea. I mean, I'm just basing off what you said for camping.
It's accurate, yeah, it was...
Hunting camp. So that's my also big concern, is the environmental aspect of moving the shed, because then, you know, we are, then, I, like you said, I think hurting the integrity, maybe not integrity, excuse me, the, the character of the neighborhood. Especially in that area, I mean, everything's getting developed, we see all over the place, you know, so... I mean, I love trees of all kinds, but I think these are ones that we should definitely, probably keep up as we can. It seems kind of useless. Wouldn't you agree, how long, let me ask the neighbors a question. I don't know if I'm allowed to do this.
Yes.
Um, how long have you, how long have you guys lived on that property?
Seven, eight years.
Eight years, okay. Do you think removal of even more trees would affect the character of your neighborhood? From your, what you can see?
Yeah.
From what we can see.
Yeah, from what you can see. Obviously, I'm not asking you to speak for the, your neighborhood, but...
Right.
But from what you can see, it would affect probably your character a little bit of your neighborhood.
You get a line, yeah, it'll be a clear line of sight into my backyard, which now is obscured by trees.
Privacy issues. Ms. Munson? Is there anything in our codes or ordinances that would prevent the placement of the shed on top of a future septic field?
No, because you'd have to relocate the septic field.
Well, there's no septic field now.
Right, so if there's no septic field, and if it's, then the shed could go in that location, and the septic would have to go someplace else.
Ah, yeah.
Because there's, there's no septic on the property right now.
I understand that.
So if the shed is going in a proposed location of a septic system, unless that permit's issued, it's, the, the design has to go in a different location.
Okay, but, but the question is, if the septic field was there, could they put a non-permanent structure on top of it?
No.
Okay. Sarah, would it be practical, although I admit some expense, to move the shed across the yard in front of the existing primitive house?
There wouldn't, I wouldn't reach setbacks on that side. I'd be way too close to the side. I wouldn't have enough for...
On the other side?
Yeah, I wouldn't meet any of the setbacks except for the right side. I'd be closer to the road.
Could it be moved up beside the house? Like a shed right beside the house?
There's a couple of really big white oak trees.
Right, right beside the house?
Yes, directly, um, right on the, the, if you're looking at the photos from the driveway to the left side of the house, you'll see there's a decent-sized white oak that's almost...
Okay, I see the power.
Maybe five feet from the house.
I just, I just don't understand how, like, if, if, again, just being devil's advocate, if we can say, okay, you can't do this, right? Then how are we not also breaking part E then? You know what I mean? So if we're saying, oh, you know, don't, don't, you know, don't do it, we're gonna make you move it, per se, and then this here, right here says, the granting of a variance, which you're trying to do, will not unreasonably adversely affect the nature's environment. And to me, I think cutting down these trees does exactly that. And I think, why are we telling you to do something where clearly right here, it tells me...
Violating your own...
Exactly. I mean, because of my, how I interpretate this, and I, and I, just asking from the neighbors that's lived there for eight years, uh, you know, they think too, it could affect the character of their neighborhood.
I, I don't dispute that at all.
But I understand, but the point really trying to get around is C, right? Yeah.
And the unfortunate part is, I mean, hindsight's always twenty-twenty, but a structure was built in violation of the ordinance and in violation of state statutes. And, and I haven't, I'm trying to work with you, Sarah, you know, how can we get around this? How can we get around this? And, boy, that, it's just, it's a great question of, is there a way to get around it? And right now, as much as I'd like to just have you leave it there, I mean, I really would like to have you leave it there. It doesn't seem to be, be bothering us all.
But, but my other point is though, again, going back to what I said, it's saying like, okay, if we're, if we're saying we have to listen to C, but then by doing so, we're literally breaking E.
We're not breaking E, because we're not gonna make her move the shed. We'd have to deny the appeal, and she'd have to take the shed down. Or find another place in the property or make a decision to either cut a tree or to move the shed to the left front, excuse me, the right front of the house by, even though there's an angle there?
Yeah, that's...
A, a grade there, I mean, to build it up or put her on a four-by-four post or something?
The right side of the property is not possible. There's not enough space on that side of the land. I have...
She said it'd be too close to the line.
Most of my land is on the, the shed side of the property. The other side is just too narrow, I wouldn't be able to do that.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Are these, are these setbacks for all of Gray? Is that, like, no matter where you are in Gray, is it fifty feet from your property line?
I believe that's correct.
For the most part, unless you're in, say, an approved subdivision that may have different setbacks, but depending on what zone you're located in, the setbacks vary from zone to zone. But in this particular one, that's, it's for every house in that zone, it's the same setback.
Yeah, if she was in Shoreland, it would be two hundred feet.
Holy.
Unless your grandfather, but if you went to build a new structure, it's like, you gotta start all over again.
Okay, thank you. It's an education for me to...
Okay, let's, let's look at our practical difficulty requirements. I would move that the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property. You know, that's another, that's another tough one right there. I mean, the property is not so unique that the placement of the shed, maybe not the moving of the shed, but the disassembly of the shed to be relocated, and a couple of trees might have to come down, but... Does anybody have any questions?
None, questioned out.
Uh, letter A. I would move that the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general conditions of the neighborhood. Is there a second?
I second that.
Is there discussion? Fogged motion, uh, Woodbury second. Is there discussion? Again, I, I, I struggle with this. What we have is, we have a mostly forested piece of property that somebody put a primitive house on. I don't know if that, was that there, would, did you buy?
It was, uh, in a shed with a wood stove. There was no electricity, no anything.
That somebody built a structure on the property, but the property doesn't appear to be so unique in that part of town.
Are there any other tiny houses in Gray that you're aware of? Is that not unique?
I, I don't know.
Or is it the property itself, meaning the land? Because I would say that the property itself, being that it's one of the only timely homes I've seen in Gray, is pretty unique.
It's not the structure that's, that's the qualifier, it's the property, it's the land itself.
The land, understood.
And the land, I mean, somebody obviously cut some trees down so they could put a small structure there, or, you know, a camp with a stove in it, and, because it appears that that was wooded before. But I don't know what's unique about the property other than it's...
Except for that wet, wet part, the trees. There's a slope there.
I would say maybe unique in the sense that it's not been cleared in the front and doesn't have a traditional lawn and is fully wooded and a bit of a nature haven in that respect, whereas most properties in the neighborhood are cleared lawns. It has a very unique attributes in that way.
So if a person bought into joining piece of property or somebody sold into joining piece of property, someone wouldn't, wouldn't come in and cut down the trees and build a house?
Depends on their lifestyle choices.
Well, I understand that, but, I mean...
And who am I, yeah?
I have to admit, I'm struggling, I'm now...
I think... I think now, I, I would, I would, I can easily make the argue, uh, minimalistic living and small living is more up enough than anything else. And housing, housing prices have never been higher. Of course, people are gonna build smaller.
She doesn't wanna cut down trees.
I know, but still, it's quite a slope there. I hadn't noticed that before.
I'm not a geologist or whatever, but what are those maps that show slope?
Topographical.
Topographical.
Yeah.
And there's no way that that shed could be
Yeah, there are
Oh, it can't be moved closer to the house, though.
There are boulders.
Not on the line.
Well, I mean, this way.
Yeah. It can't go on this side. That's right, or septic, that's right.
The septic, is the septic being built between the shed and the house?
The septic may not be built, but if it is, that's where it needs to go according. I've had a, um, the, the septic design gentleman out there quite a few times to try and help me in this situation. Specifically, I have emails from Stephen Mercot back and forth, who signed off on the septic plans there, who has told me that's where the septic goes because of the water runoff situation.
And there's no room for this shed right, directly behind the, the house? Unless you cut a tree down.
Cut, I don't, I'm, I don't know about the blocks that you all are talking about, so how I picture this would be a lot of landwork. The, the house is where it is because it's really one of the only peak areas. Everything else goes down around it. So it's gonna be in mucky water places otherwise. Um, and again, I don't know about the blocks that you all are talking about. So it does get a fair amount of water and I wouldn't trust the structural integrity of the ground in those areas.
Okay, the motion on the floor is the need for the variance is due to unique circumstances of the property and not the general condition of the neighborhood. All those in favor, all those that agree with that?
I agree with that.
I agree, that would be unanimous. Letter B, the granting of the variance, I'll make the motion, will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not unreasonably detrimentally affect the use or market value of the abiding properties. Is there a second?
I second. Georgia Woodbury, second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Letter C.
Yeah.
The practical difficulty is not the result of the action taken by the petitioner or a prior owner. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Shirley seconds. Discussion?
I'll, I will say why I second it. Because I'm looking at this, right, and I didn't even, honestly, I forgot what B kinda said at the beginning. So, right now, if we, if we say, take down the shed, right? I think we would then be breaking B and upcoming E. So for me, I think this still falls under the result of taking, even if, you know? I second it.
Okay.
It is, for something she did, but at the same time, there's no place else to put it. Really. Without changing the looks of the property.
By breaking B and C.
I understand that. The question is though, can we knowingly allow?
I'll sleep good tonight.
An intentional act to be in violation.
I'll sleep tight tonight. Right with my kid by my side. I won't lose any sleep over it. Because at the end of the day, it's a request for leniency, and this is us being lenient. It's not like, again, it's a watershed. It's not some kid growing pot. It's kinda rude to like, mess up with someone's water, too. There has to be some human rights with that, too. Like, if someone's literally drinking water.
Thank you.
Like, what the hell? Like, I, I mean, like, her lifestyle choice is yes, but come on, at what point are we gonna say?
At what point is my water situation helping the environment more than the setback?
Absolutely.
Tammy, how much trouble were you in?
Does anybody from the public have any comments on this motion? Anybody?
I personally don't think she intentionally did it. Like, she, like she said, we didn't know her when she first moved in there, first time owning a home, so she didn't intentionally say, hey, I'm gonna screw with this and just put this shed right here. She really didn't know. And knowing her now, I know because she dots her i's and crosses her t's, very thorough individual, so. Um, and I've never heard anybody have complained about any of that. As long as we've been on that road.
And we're talking
It's, but it's not today, it's, it's the next owner, landowner, that does something similar. It says, well, you let that person do it.
Get more board members. That's how we solve this problem.
I will say Derek, I think, or Mr. Shirley makes a very
Oh, I know, but I'm just saying the truth of the matter. That's a factual statement.
Um, that you make a very good point that this is an application for leniency, so which part of this is, is or isn't being lenient? If, if I'm coming here to have everything checked box like it was supposed to be, then I wouldn't have bothered, because that's not what leniency is.
Tammy? Can the board grant? Could the board grant an appeal with stipulations?
I think you could do, I think you could do with conditions.
Okay. I would amend my motion to say the practical difficulty is not the result of an action taken by the petitioner or a prior owner stipulating that the structure come into compliance within one year. That would give you one year to come into compliance. That gives you time to decide whether you wanna put a septic in. And when the septic system is going in, obviously, trees are gonna have to be cut to take out the roof system, which would be an opportunity to move the structure without conceivable damage or additional gross damage to the land. All in favor of motion?
I second it.
Passes. Unanimous. And, and Derek, uh, uh, seconded that.
Oh, I seconded that, all day.
I wrote it down. Okay, uh, letter D. I would move that no other feasible alternative to a variance is available to the pitch, petitioner.
At this time?
Well, we Is there a second?
I second.
And we've already put a condition on the intent and the variance, so all those in favor of letter D? Unanimous. I would move that the granting of variance will not unreasonably adversely affect the natural environment. And given the year to move, uh, the shed up to a year, I think, is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. And the property is not located in whole or in part within the shoreland areas as described in Title thirty-eight, Section four thirty-five. Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor? Passed. Now the emotion, here we go. I would move that Sarah Wyman, who is requesting a practical difficult variance for a thirty-foot reduction to a fifty-foot front line setback to an existing eight-foot by ten-foot shed located on her property at one oh four Johnson Road, Gray Main, Tax Mac seventeen, Lot three dash thirteen dot three, located in the Lake zoning district, be granted with the attached stipulation. And we did that with letter C.
Condition.
Condition. Is there a second?
I second, Woodbury, second.
Is there any?
No.
Any discussion?
I was just saying, yeah.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Sometime in the next week or so, uh, the officer will type that up and mark your calendar.
I will.
Because the code enforcement officer will ensure that that structure is moved within the next twelve months from the date of signature.
On it.
Okay?
Okay, am I allowed to shake hands?
I will. Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. That showed some of the N C here, and I thought it was a good idea.
Sorry, yeah.
Well, it kind of, it's the way you want it, you know, where it runs. Yeah, no way.
Can't break two things.
I do hear you, but I didn't, yeah, I just thought, sort of place, and I was gonna let it be here. You two first reading it. That was a well reopened candlestick.
That one was a killer. Yep, I said it was a bugger.
Uh, our next order, our next order of business is the Getz variance, is that correct, Getz? Does anybody wanna make a motion, open the public hearing?
I make a motion that we, uh, open the public hearing on the Getz variance. Is that how you say that?
Getz.
Getz, okay. All, uh, is, I'll second. All those in favor? Is there somebody here representing the Getz variance request? Anybody?
I didn't see them. I didn't know who the other people were, so I'm surprised that they're not here.
Yeah, because they really
So can we move them to the next meeting? Because I know this is something that they still wanna pursue.
I would like to make some comments on my concerns, or I think we have some concerns about the Getz variance that we would like the homeowner or the applicant to be made aware of. Can we do that?
That could explain the variance to you.
Well, our concern, our concern is, and I'll let Georgia start.
Um, except I've lost my, oh, here it is. Um, I based on fourteen Yarmouth Road, where it was located, um, I live on Yarmouth Road, so I drive by there constantly. And one, I understand from the planning board and everything that they're gonna be working on one fifteen and putting in sidewalks, et cetera, if that section of one fifteen within the next year or so, or that's the plan. Um, I looked it up on the, uh, fourteen Yarmouth Road on the Gray website and found out that, um, there's only two parking spots. So how do they wanna have five guest rooms?
They would have to provide a parking plan.
They'd have to.
They would have, prior to having a permit issued, they would have to be in compliance with the parking requirements of whatever use it is that
Yeah, because that little stretch, I mean, Sunday mornings
That you would go in, that would be the requirement of whatever it is in the zoning ordinance.
In, in the past, Tammy, if people, and they have to go to the planning board still?
For.
With this application, do they still have to go to the planning board for bed and breakfast?
No, not for a B and B, but for hotel motels, they may.
Yeah, and there was nothing in the ordinances on four bedrooms. There was three bedrooms, or five bedrooms.
Correct. I think it I'll just leave it at
Okay.
Well, another concern I have, not only the parking and potential sidewalk, but if one fifteen is gonna be reconstructed, will they use the entire, uh, state right-of-way for widening the road and the sidewalk, and how much is that gonna cut into the, let's say, like, the existing lawn?
Yeah, and, and I can mention this to them. I mean, I don't think, I, I don't think these applicants are even aware of that. Um, they're new to the area.
Yeah, that's
Um, and I can certainly mention that to them, but they do have to show that they that they, um, can meet the parking requirements of the zoning ordinance for whatever the count is that they have.
Doesn't, I, I couldn't find anywhere quite what size, well, the lot says thirty-nine thousand, six hundred thirty-nine square feet. I don't know based on how many, is that an, over two acres? I don't know how
No, thirty-nine thousand would be just shy of, an, in acres around forty-three thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think I wanna see I don't mean to be an ass about this, but I really wanna see what's he gonna do for parking. I'd like to know a little bit more from the town about the
I could have them bring a parking plan with them.
I'd like to know a little bit more from the town about the one fifteen reconstruction.
Yeah, what I could do is I could instruct them because
I also wanna know, I also wanna know how they're gonna meet the fire codes.
Yeah, that is, yeah, that, that they're fully aware of. I think the biggest thing is, is that, and they should, and, and I will ask them to talk to the town planner because he is a schematic in, out in this hallway, that's that big
Yeah.
thing on the wall, um, and can show them how much it will take away and what their property will look like after that's done. And I can ask them to do a schematic for the board of basically after that is done, their property with a parking plan for your consideration when you hear their appeal. I can ask them to bring that information for you.
Now, going from a residential house to a commercial business, B and B, and I know that the plan, the comprehensive plan is looking for small commercial businesses to be developed in, in the village, uh, zone. I just lost my whole train of thought.
Commercial businesses in the village zone. Small commercial businesses.
Oh, God, isn't that terrible?
You're talking about fire codes.
Yeah, fire codes and, uh, parking and yeah, I'm concerned about, you know, how much road the state is gonna take there, um, but I think there's a lot going on that I would wanna know about.
Plus, they wanted a business in there as well.
Did they wanna, did, bed and, bed and breakfast business?
They wanted an, not, they wanted an office for a business.
Office for a business.
Not, not a not a business where employees would be going in and out.
No, just an office.
Yeah, kitchen requirements for bed and breakfast, dining requirements for bed and breakfast, you know, the number of bathrooms for a bed and breakfast, fire escape for bed and breakfast, I mean.
Well, under the, under the building code, what they would fall under is, it's based on number of rooms and based on that decision will determine what they need to do. And a lot of times, they are still considered a single-family home.
But the, okay. Yeah, I think, um, is there a motion at the table?
For sure.
I just had a comment or if I could add. Um, Chris Hanley, live at four Hancock Street.
Would, would you step up to the podium? Because the people at home will want to, they'll wanna hear.
Yeah, so I'll do this, too.
Derek?
Um, never been here, done anything like this, but, so I live at four Hancock Street. My name's Chris Hanley. So I'm at the back of the property. It's, it's a very narrow, kind of a long property there. Um, I, I wish that the family and business success in, in this or whatever they do, but, and I'm very willing to work with them. I just didn't want my backyard turned into a a parking lot, because there isn't parking. There's a garage there now. I suspect maybe they'd wanna take down and, and turn to parking and I just didn't want, there's trees there now, so I'm willing to if they put, you know, some kind of buffer up in there, that's all I want to add and, um, but
Yeah, I, I think
I didn't wanna come to meetings that no one shows up to, so.
I do, I, I think, I think we need to table.
Yeah.
I second.
Okay. We will table until the April April meeting, whatever that may be.
Thank you for your input.
Okay, now we have the Let me find that, I want to get the proper agenda item for today.
Oh wait, I got the old one actually.
Okay, this is the baby.
Okay. Do you have the agenda page for this one? I've done something with it. Oh yeah, thank you. Our next order of business is EAC LLC variance request. Neocraft signs on behalf of the, uh, owners of the shopping center, right? Are requesting a waiver appeal on the standards established in the sign ordinance to install an additional freestanding sign located on the property at twenty-one Portland Road. Tax map zero forty-three lot, four oh four dash one seven one dash zero zero zero, in a village center zoning district. Is there a motion, open the public hearing?
Woodbury moves that we open the public hearing on the EAC LLC variance request.
Okay, is there a second?
Derek's second.
All those in favor? We're open, who's here representing EAC Limited Liability Corporation to put a sign up? Step, step up to the podium, please.
Enter and sign in, please.
Good evening, my name's Clay Booblak, I'm with Neocraft Signs out of Lewiston.
What's your last name Clay?
Booblak. Spelled B U B L A K. I wish I could also be the one to say this is my first time here, but it's not.
Clay, were you here two years ago?
Yes, sir.
Just out of curiosity, what happened to that sign that hasn't been put up yet?
Not sure.
Okay. Just thought I'd ask.
I have asked that question a couple of times myself and.
Well, let's limit ourselves to the one we've got going with us now. So Clay, what's going on with the sign?
So the, uh, plaza is looking to replace the two existing signs that are at each entrance to the plaza uh, with new updated signs to, you know, enhance and beautify the existing signs, cause they are not that pretty. So, we want to do something a little bit nicer. Um, the first, if you're, I don't know how you would want to describe which entrance the, you've got the entrance nearest to the Dairy Joy and then the one further down.
The dentist's office and the brewery.
The dentist's office and the brewery. I'm not sure.
Well, we've got the brewery on one end, we've got the dentist's office on the other, the brewery is on the village end and the dentist's office, main dentistry is on the other end.
That works for me.
You know the brewery, I know the Dairy Joy.
Okay.
I, I know something else.
So don't I? Okay, so let's look at, let's call it the north end for the short.
Sure.
Which is the B and R end.
That would be the, the brewery end.
Yeah.
I would assume. So we're looking to do a multi-tenant sign there and replace that existing one. Uh, we're actually going somewhat, uh, smaller than what the existing one is. And this is actually falling into code where it has the uh, nine one one emergency address at the top of the sign. As the code shows, uh, I was informed today that that is a requirement for these type of, uh, plaza signs. So we will have to make a small adjustment to the southern sign to incorporate that address number on there as well.
Okay, how much bigger is this sign than what the code allows for?
Um, I think Tammy and I figured it out that it was about, what, we were about ten square feet total. More than what the existing, or what the, uh, code was gonna allow. It's kind of convoluted in the way you have to break up what can be tenant spaces and what can be the header. Plaza sign.
So the smaller picture is the one on the southern end?
The smaller side is the one at the southern end.
Okay. Will these signs as proposed allow for the addition of all the tenants?
Yes.
Like the hair place, uh, the dance place, um, you've got the hardware store in there.
Right here.
I will say in.
Turn the page.
The northern sign, yes.
Yeah.
Because that's where the, most of those, uh, uh, businesses are located. And really the hardware store and the, uh, grocery store are their own building further down the property towards the southern entrance, which is why we only incorporated those two uh, tenants on that sign.
So is there an intent to include the brewery and the B and R on there?
Um.
Or are they separate entities?
Anybody in this plaza that is part of this, the, the plaza itself, will be allowed to go on there. This has been going for, for some months, so obviously tenants change, so we, we would get a full updated, uh, graphics and tenant list before we went to final production, obviously.
Cause that was a question I had earlier today, so I'm not sure that the brewery, the upholstery place, and I know B and R is not owned by the same people that own the plaza.
And I think that's a separate.
Yeah.
That, a, a, a separate property and the way the, the property lines are located where that, the, the north sign is, that's on the plaza's property. But you have to get to the other property through
Through there.
The plaza.
Yeah.
Property, if, if I'm correct on that.
You gotta get through the, you gotta get to the brewery through the plaza property and the upholstery place. But I think B and R's got that little square that's all theirs, their response before it's upkeep and.
But you still have to drive in through the plaza entrance.
And I didn't realize it until today when, uh, when we were looking at the maps that, uh, the bank and the, the, or the TD Bank, uh, main savings and, or main, uh, state.
Main credit, yeah.
Credit Union and the dentist's office are all their own properties and the twenty-one Portland Road actually horseshoes around those.
Really?
Yes.
Interesting.
Okay, does anybody have any, any questions? Of Clay? Are there any comments from the public?
I'm honestly missing that one myself.
This one?
Oh yeah, I'm.
It's right there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm curious as to, um, the lighting that's gonna be used, is it internal lighting?
That is, it is as proposed, it is, and, and they are internally illuminated signs. Um, there are multiple internally illuminated signs in that area.
Right.
Specifically being TD Bank, um, Interscog Bank, Dollar Tree, all those right, you know, literally in their parking lot and across the street are all lit signs as well.
Now you had mentioned how tenants change.
Mm-hmm.
Is the sign gonna be able to be changed?
One hundred percent.
Cause there was some things up there now that are like, wow, that hasn't been there for an awful long time.
Unfortunately, most towns, and I, I will be honest, I haven't, you know, read your code enough times to memorize all the bits and pieces, but most towns do have uh, lines in the ordinance that says that when a, when somebody goes out of business, their sign needs to be removed after so mu- so much time. And a lot of people don't follow nor enforce those, those rules. Could make me a lot more money if I did, no.
Say, are the signs on both ends of the plaza the same size? Height and width?
No. Well, technically yes, technically no. Um, the overall dimensions are the same, they are fifteen foot tall, which falls within the code and they are both six foot wide. But the, uh, the, the sign, square footage of the signage at the north entrance is larger than what is at the southern entrance. Not by much, but a little bit.
Okay, so it's eighteen. Quiet. That was, that was take the pill off. Eighteen and that's one feet four inches, one feet six, that's two feet ten inches. Two feet ten inches, that's, uh, thirty-four inches times six feet.
Is the, is the big problem, is the size of the sign?
Uh, let's see, they are requesting the variance because. Property, uh, the project. So the request for the variance is because of the total square, I mean, the height and width that we're looking at?
Uh, that.
It's really not clear on the application at all.
Here's a few things going on that the board needs to be aware of.
Yeah.
I was just gonna bring that up.
Yeah, and mainly there's, there's like three things. His proposed design is slightly over in size. Under the ordinance, technically, when existing signs are replaced, you have to come into compliance. The sign ordinance says that you're only allowed to have one per property. And so where his proposal is to have one at each entrance, and I would argue that that's what nine one one purposes. These are signs are, what did we say, six, four or six?
Six hundred, just over six hundred linear feet between the two signs and with the three businesses that are in between them.
And then the, the, the third issue would be that internal illumination is not allowed in that district and electronic, um, message display boards are not allowed in that district.
Where's the electronic display?
I didn't see anything here about an electronic messaging board.
That's on the southern sign.
Oh, those two, the sub.
So the, the lower sign?
Oh, that's why they're like that.
Pardon?
So the three things that, just in summary, is asking for the two freestanding signs, because the ordinance allows one. He's slightly over on dimensional stuff, which either they can request that or correct it. And then the internal illumination and electronic display board.
Guess I'm missing that.
These two, these two things right here are electronic, they can change what it says.
It's just the lower, the lowest.
So the, the lower two, like whatever they are, would they be flashing or once they change, they'd stay the same?
They, they're, they're a static message until it changes and it, whatever the, the town ordinance allows. Tammy, do you know the, the hold time for each individual message?
No, I don't.
Yeah. Uh, state law says, uh, no flashing, no strobing, no scrolling, um, and no vote, motion, no video. So it's a static image, it would literally look like a banner that is there. And it's just able to be changed electronically.
Okay.
Yeah, the other thing I want to point out Brad is I did give you the section of the, the sign ordinance that talks about waivers and appeals. And that also discusses the board's authority on what they can do.
There we go, right here. It was in a separate one that she gave us.
Okay, I'm good. Does anybody else have anything? Any comments from the public?
Did you say that new signs that are going are smaller than the existing ones?
Yes, actually.
Okay.
Yeah. If you were to look at, uh, the sign, the composite of the northern sign, you'll see in the photo composite down here in the corner, you'll see the, the, there's a pink outline versus the, uh, photo composite. The pink outline is the existing structure and sign and you'll see how much smaller the new sign is actually going to be.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Some might say smaller, but I think it's more efficient.
Yeah.
It'd be a lot neater.
Yeah.
And we're definitely trying to pull people into the town.
Yeah.
Okay.
As Tammy said, the nine one one issue with a sign at each end of that plaza.
Will the nine one one be incorporated in like the scroll of the bar?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, I'll, I was actually looking at this after, uh, Tammy and I spoke earlier and I can take the design standard from this one at the north sense, uh, north entrance with that curved top, take out this little bit of scroll work here and add that twenty-one
Okay.
right there at the top to, to bring that into closer compliance to the code in that aspect.
That was something that, uh, the board granted, um, two years ago to twelve, thirteen, fifteen Main Street. That twelve, I mean thirteen fifteen Main Street would be at the top of the sign.
Correct.
And clearly visible, okay. Thank you. Let's look at our, our variance information and go to our practical difficulty variance requests. Anyone start?
The need, A, the need for a variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general condition of the neighborhood. Do I have a motion?
You just made the motion.
I just made the motion, do I have a second?
I will second. Any discussion? Well, I would s- suggest that, uh, the way the plaza is spread out, that there certainly needs to be some type of new signage there which more clearly indicates uh, what's there and where it actually is in terms of its address on Portland Road. The unique circumstances, it's, it's a, it's a long, it's the, it's, it's a shopping plaza, I mean, it's spread out and it's not compact, there's multiple businesses there, so. And all, all those in favor? Unanimous. Anybody want to shoot for letter B?
Uh, I will. Letter B, the granting of variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not unreasonably detrimentally affect, uh, the use or market value of the bottomed properties.
I second.
I'd second, any discussion? I don't think the, the abiding property is gonna be affected at all, cause it's.
No.
Even though it might be within the village zones, it's basically a commercial portion of the village zone with the plaza on one side of the street, got a bank and we've got, uh, the Dollar Tree on the other side of the street. It's all stacked right there together, the, the butter, on one end is either the B and R or it's the old, um, ladder structure place, and on the other end of the plaza is wetland, so.
Yeah.
Nobody's affected there, all those in, in favor of what?
Aye.
Unanimous. Do we want to go with letter C?
I move the practical difficulty is not the result of action taken by the petitioner or a prior owner.
I'll second that.
Second, discussion. I'm not sure that there really is a practical difficulty here.
No.
In that we're taking two old outdated signs and replacing them where they are. Which would have been similar to the shed if we could have done that with the shed. And.
Just to, just to, uh, bring one point, we are changing the location of the southern one.
Yes.
Right now, the, the southern one is on the side of the entrance and we're gonna move it to the island in the middle of the entrance.
What, fifteen feet?
Yes, sir.
That's an approved though.
Brilliant, and maybe people will see the island, cause I see a lot of people running into it lately.
Yeah, this, the boards were kind of piled up on the side when I went by yesterday.
Just out of curiosity, will they be doing something with that island to make it safer?
I sure hope so.
Well, cause, uh, the island on both ends is really, I mean, they're not well lit at all. Uh, all those in favor of letter C? That's unanimous. Letter D?
I'll do that. No other feasible alternative, uh, to a variance is available to the petitioner.
I second that.
I would second, discussion. I think that it's really not practical to put the signs in the middle of the property. I mean, because then you don't know and to put them farther, further or farther from either entrance is not practical. I don't, I don't see that, uh, there's a feasible alternative to placement of the signs. I mean, we're really not changing anything other than the appearance of the sign and making it more compatible with the community and with the comprehensive plan of improving the appearance of a village, uh, district. All those in favor? It's unanimous. I will say, uh, I move that the property is not located in whole or in part within shoreline areas as described in Title thirty-eight, Section four thirty-five. Is there a second?
I second.
All those in favor or agreement? It's unanimous. Is there a main motion?
You skipped one, Mr. Chair.
You know what, I thought that.
Which one do I?
I thought that, but I was like, I'm not gonna tell the chair he messed up.
Yeah, no, we just, we, we just did that.
We skipped E.
E.
He skipped E, and I want to make sure that you.
The granting the variance will not unreasonably adversely affect the nature.
Of the natural, but I, I am sorry.
It's okay.
I wrote, I wrote.
We'll let this one slide.
Can you just move to, on that?
I will second, I will second his motion. Derek made the motion, I will second. All those in favor? And the environment's not changing at all, other than it's apparent which will look better. Is there a main motion?
Yes. I will move that NeoCraft signs on behalf of EAC LLC is requesting a be re-
Be granted.
Be granted a waiver appeal of the standards established in the sign ordinance to install an additional freestanding sign located on their property at twenty-one Portland Road, gray tax map, zero four three dash lot four oh four dash one seven one dash zero 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 in Village Center zoning district. Do I have a second?
You have a second. Any discussion? I will, uh, throw out there that this is not the first time in the last couple of years NeoCraft has been here. They were granted an approval, uh, two years ago to replace signs at fifteen, thirteen, fifteen Main Street, which are actually, uh, larger than the current signs there. And the essence was to eliminate signage on that property. And we approved, uh, new signage there which was the same size as the Cumberland Farms, which is across the street, which had received a planning board exemption for the sign ordinance because that sign was larger than what the ordinance allowed for. And when the planning board approved the project, they approved that enlarged sign. So I don't think that we're doing anything that, uh, is outside the law or outside the intent of the comprehensive plan. And I certainly do think it's gonna make the plaza look better and overall.
Can I make a comment, Mr. Chair, on the motion?
I beg your pardon?
Can I make a comment on the motion?
Sure.
Originally, um, because there were multiple things going on with this, with this sign, it was that we wrote up the ad to be granted an additional sign. I just think that it's important that if you're gonna grant this variance in your motion that you include the you can reference it, if you amend it, in reference an attached plan. Because it's basically a variance from dimensional standards. You're allowing an internally illuminated signs and you're also allowing a display board as part of this variance. And so I want to make sure that that's properly documented in the motion so that it approves his, his, his plan.
I will amend the main motion to include that the variance how do I want to say this?
I'm gonna get those three items, internally illuminated, two signs, electronic display.
That the variance approval include internal illumination of the signs. That two signs are being replaced on the north and the south ends of the plaza. And that the south end sign be permitted electronic messaging.
Anything else, Jamie?
As stipulated in the submitted plan. Is there a second to the amendment?
I second the amendment.
All those in favor of the amendment? All those in favor of the main motion? See, the planning office, I mean, the code enforcement office will, I'll let you know when the paperwork is signed and off you go.
Thank you.
And good luck, hopefully, uh, you'll have better luck in installing this one.
I'm sure hoping so.
Is there any other business before the board tonight? I will let the public know that, uh, we do have a new applicant, uh, to the zoning board of appeals. And he will, uh, hopefully be on the agenda for the first council meeting in the month of April for consideration and approval. Well, any other business, we are adjourned.